Okay, let's start the City of Milton County Council meeting Tuesday, January 7th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order and confirm appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we have an agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. I think Jerry should do it from now until April. Okay, is there anybody here that wants to participate in public comments that may have not signed anything? Nope? No, okay. You know, when we have four people in the audience, we want... We assume somebody wants to talk. And thank you for being here. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? The motion carries. Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the proposed 2020 utility and TID budgets.
So, this is something that we typically do every year after the budget process is completed for the city's annual budget. We do the TIF and utility budgets because they're separate budgets and not supported by tax levy. They don't follow under the same requirements by the state that the other budgets do, but we do need to prepare annual budgets. So Dan has done so as he has in the past, prepared a budget for the water utility, wastewater utility, stormwater utility, and for the four active TIFs. And then let Dan add any salient points that he'd like to.
The TID six budget does reflect the early payoff that was approved last week. So, I guess if there's any questions, there's nothing out of the ordinary in any of those. I don't think the capital requests are, you know, what they are. And if something else major comes up, and even the things that are major that are on there, they'll all get approved by this governing body prior to us signing a contract.
And again, these are a little, these are obviously different than the annual budget that the city prepares, because again, that sets the tax rate and is supported by levy debt, whereas these are enterprise funds or special revenue funds. Water utility is basically governed by the PSC as well as the wastewater utility. Stormwater utility is funded through stormwater payments as part of the utility bill, and then the tax incremental finance districts are supported by their project plans that are approved by the council when those are created, and then any changes to those are subsequently approved. So it's really just kind of a snapshot reflection in time as to what is going on with those individual funds. There's no major changes or anything in there. And typically, when changes happen to any of these funds, they happen throughout the year, and then those are addressed through a separate action. So really, the idea of putting together a budget is somewhat of a ubiquitous term in this concept, in this context, because it's more of a snapshot than it is a budget per se, because the decisions have already previously been made, and any future decisions would be made through subsequent actions, so.
And the TID budgets, we did throw in additional years, because this is what we also, what staff uses as for projecting future cash flows of the TIFs. So rather than truncate the report, we just thought it was beneficial for y'all to see the future projections.
And the good news in terms of TIF, now that TIF eight is closed, all of the current TIFs, six, seven, nine, and 10, are very healthy, doing exactly what we had hoped they would do. They're doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is generating increment, which then can be reinvested within the TIF districts, either through infrastructure improvements or through developer incentives. So there's no... All of the projections that Dan and I have been working on for five years have pretty much kind of held true. And yeah, so we're in good shape.
Does this require any action, then?
Just approval, as it stated in the memo.
Approval of the proposed 2020 budgets for water, wastewater, stormwater, and the approval of the proposed 2020 TID six, seven, nine, and 10 budgets. I don't know that they necessarily need to be.
It's not required. You can do that if you want, but you can make it into one if you want.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do your job and add a few more words. Use your words.
Approval of the proposed 2020 budgets for water, sewer, wastewater, and stormwater budgets, and approval of the proposed 2020 TID six, seven, nine, and 10 budget.
I'll second.
Everything's good. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, thank you, Linda. Discussion on possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application for Mark and Rhonda Mitchell and Mitchell House Coffee located at 130 Front Street.
So as indicated in the memo, Mark and Rhonda Mitchell purchased the building at 130 Front Street last year, and they are in the throes of redeveloping that site. The city entered into a TIF development agreement with the Mitchells in the summer of 2019 with kind of the anticipation, understanding that they may require additional funds as the project moves along. In speaking with the Mitchells late last year, had a discussion about that very topic, and they have subsequently submitted a facade grant application. As indicated in the memo, this is not uncommon. The precedent has already been established in which entities that have received TIF funds can then come back later and ask for additional funds for additional improvements. We've seen that very recently, actually, with TLC Restorations. And to a lesser degree, we saw it with the Milton House, frankly. Staff is in support of this, of their request. Their overall improvement value far exceeds what we would expect to see in terms of a traditional TIF development agreement if that were to stand alone. So we're certainly comfortable with this request and the funds that are available to service this request. And it is unique in the sense that it really is two properties within one parcel, similar to what we did with Junction Pub, Fredericks, and those properties, and as well as TLC Restorations. You know, we're able to provide kind of a dual facade grant for one structure that has two properties within it, or two businesses, or uses, or tenant spaces, however you want to phrase that, so.
When the other, when we provided more money under the other projects, were those requests done specifically under facade grants, or were they?
Yes. Yeah, in both those cases that I referenced, so for like, to use TLC Restorations, for example, they received a TIF development agreement, like an SBD. It was a former SBD program that the city offered, and then they have came back and got a TIF development agreement after that, and then even got a facade grant after that. So they've actually kind of gotten it three times around. And similar with the Milton House, they received TIF development incentives, and then received a facade grant as well. The funding source is the same?
Yes, I just want to make sure that when when other groups have come in, just specifically for a facade grant, they have been in lesser amounts. And we have tried to keep them in lesser amounts, but if we kept the wording in "facade grant," even grant, even when they came in with a TIF, I wanted to make sure that we don't encourage those larger amounts, because we were trying to get this other grants that they would match them.
And in this case, this is a matching, yeah, this doesn't, this doesn't kind of deviate from past practice in facade grants. Facade grants allow you, the facade grant program as established, allows you to take out up to $5,000 per property every three years. We kind of bent to those rules a little bit for TLC and said, well, you have multiple properties, or you have multiple addresses, so we'll do 10, well, we'll, in essence, you can max out the facade grant of $10,000. The original idea was you'd take five in year one, and then five in year three. Well, knowing that the projects were the scope that they were, we kind of doubled that up with TLC. And then we did the same thing with the Milton House. TLC received 10,000, Milton House received 10,000, with the understanding that that would kind of be their three-year allotment, just truncated into one year.
Okay. All right, thanks, Linda.
I'm going to give motion to approve the commercial facade grant.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say I'm very happy that we're getting our businesses and our downtowns redeveloped this way, and I'm happy to see people taking advantage of it. It makes the city stay nice looking, and especially our downtowns. That's what people like.
Thank you. Anything else for anybody? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Eight, review of December financial statements.
So this is, I'm just talking because Dan doesn't feel very well, so I'm trying to talk for a little bit more. This is the December financials, kind, it's not the official year end yet, but this was the last month of the year. This doesn't require any action, but this is what we do, kind of, we try to typically do this at the first meeting of the subsequent month, so.
And then there's two check registers since the second meeting in December was canceled. So there's a November and December, because you haven't seen either one of them.
Any concerns on your part, Dan?
Nope.
Does anybody have any questions?
Sinorama? I see that's...
What month?
This is 11/20, oh, wait a minute. I just lost it. 11/27? Collection signs? Oh, okay. All right, I was just... I hadn't seen that before, so I was just kind of wondering. Thank you.
Okay, spend money to make money, right?
Anything else for anybody? All right, big controversial item of the night, discussion of possible action on primary for election of the elder persons.
So I don't know, folks had saw, had an opportunity to see the memo that LeAnn sent out this afternoon. It's now online, but she sent it out as well, just in case. Did everybody get a chance to see that? So kind of understand how we got here with guidance from the Wisconsin Elections Commission. They indicated because the deadline is extended until Friday at 5:00, that would put us in a very precarious situation in the event that five or more candidates between now and Friday at 5:00 submit their nomination papers. So it was their recommendation that we discuss this tonight and basically say, if there are five or more candidates, yes, we would like to hold a primary, or if there are not five or more candidates, then no, we would not like to hold a primary. In some ways, it is a little bit more transparent, because we don't even know who those candidates would be at this point. But it's highly, 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 highly improbable that that would happen. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't scrambling to hold a special meeting, like, over the weekend, or like, right away on Monday morning in order to meet the state imposed deadline, that they require us to have our ballot prepped, done by, I think, Monday afternoon or something like that. So she outlined that in the memo for us. She did a nice job of kind of explaining how we got here. But so, as LeAnn points out, she does not have a recommendation, but it would really be up to the council. The council has discussed this in the past. As of today, there are not enough candidates to require a primary, and the city does not have a policy or ordinance to direct the council in deciding upon a primary. Currently, the common council calls a special meeting and decides upon a primary when the situation presents itself, but because of the timing of this, we didn't want to put everybody in that position.
So do they have the option to not have a primary, or do they have to have a primary if there's five or more?
So what she's indicating here is the council could make a motion to have a primary if after the nomination deadline has passed, there are more than two candidates per seat. So what the motion would, I guess, not trying to put words in your mouth, but what the motion could be is make a motion to hold a primary in the event that there are more than two candidates per seat have, more than two candidates per seat have submitted paperwork that has been approved by the city clerk to appear on the April ballot.
But there's also a motion you could make to have no primary regardless.
Right, right. So in the event that there are five or more candidates between now and Friday at 5:00, you could make a motion to say irrespective of the number of candidates that provide application or papers, irrespective of that number, we're not going to hold a primary. That is, that is available.
Was that what you were asking?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. So in the event that two candidates, or we move forward with only two candidates, or three candidates, or four candidates, that wouldn't be more than two per seat, so even if you made the first motion that I read, a primary wouldn't kick in.
I guess my preference would be, what we talked about to begin with, more, if there are no more than two candidates per seat, otherwise have a special meeting on Monday, the 13th, to discuss whether or not we want a primary.
Could do that.
I mean, that's, I am pretty sure that we won't have that many, but just in case.
Yeah, at this time, we have, instead of having more than two candidates per seat, we actually have less candidates than are available, and then seats open, so.
But if we choose to not have a primary, then we don't have to have a special meeting, correct?
Right, so if you, so there's really...
That would be my preference.
Yeah, there's three options. You could make a motion tonight to hold a primary if there are more than two candidates per seat. So in the event that five or more candidates submit papers between now and Friday, you're making the decision tonight that yes, you will have a primary, irrespective of the number of candidates greater than, that, greater than six. You could make a motion to not have a primary irrespective of the number of people who submit papers. Or you could make a motion to hold a special meeting on Monday morning if there are more than two candidates per seat. So those are really the three options. It's yes, we're going to have a primary, no, we're not gonna, or let's wait and see. I'm trying to kind of parse it down.
I have a question for Mark. Is since Ryan and I are both on the ballot at this point in time, is do you, are we allowed to vote? Okay. Are we allowed to make a motion? Okay.
Yes.
But somebody could still file a complaint that they're mad that they didn't, right?
Is that a real question?
It is a real question. Because it doesn't mean that, I mean, you can do it, there's no reason that you, there's no statute that says you can't. You can't be in the room or anything like that, but it doesn't mean somebody could not be upset and file, essentially file a complaint.
That's correct. Somebody could file a complaint, so. If you want to avoid that, you can have somebody make the motion who is not running for office.
I will make a motion that we have a primary if there are more than two candidates per available seat for the upcoming election.
I'll second that.
So just so everybody's clear, Larry has indicated basically option number one of the three options that I outlined. Right? Is that, okay, I just want to make, it gets a little confusing.
Does anybody have any comments?
So correct me if I'm wrong. Elder person laying motion to have a primary if there are more than two candidates per available seat for the upcoming election.
What the primary date be?
February 18th, I want to say?
That sounds right.
Well, the City of Milton will have our primary on the 18th.
And it's, just so folks know, I can't remember, she put it in here, maybe she put it, or maybe somebody mentioned it. There's highly likely to be a primary on that date anyways for the statewide Supreme Court race. So it wouldn't be a standalone primary, I guess, is the point.
Anybody else? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
So can I vote a paper for five, five more people? I hope that problem comes up.
Okay, all right, general items, committee reports.
There was a lot of holidays since the last time we met, so I don't know how many committees actually met.
No? Nothing? Staff reports? Howie?
No snow, till the weekend.
Okay, so now we're going to get a foot, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Saturday night, right? Oh, Friday afternoon.
Chief?
I don't have much to share either. Made it through the holidays. Still a full staff, and it's going well.
A major jinx, a major jinx has been said. Ashley, you better have something to tell us.
We're relaunching our Friends of the Milton Public Library group. We have an executive board established, but we have an open house on January 30th at 5:00 o'clock for anybody who's interested in being part of committees to help the library. So I'm very excited to get that going and be a great support for the library.
Inga?
Oh, wait. So next week, we're going to have a couple committee meetings, including the Census Complete Count Committee, and we're going to be meeting across the street at Cafe 26 on January 15th at 11:00 AM.
So please join us.
I don't have a lot, other than, again, holidays are done, and everybody is, you know, kind of recuperating or trying to get back to normal. We, our next meeting is scheduled for the 21st of January. It appears as though at this time, we'll likely have a number of items on that agenda, as well as a plan commission agenda that day. So I don't think we'll be as lucky to have a 24-minute meeting on the 21st as we did today, in addition to plan commission too, so. Oh, I'll cede my time.
You don't have to.
And she persisted.
No, I forgot. I do have one announcement on behalf of the Gathering Place. We have, you know, I have talked a couple of times about plans for things going up behind the Gathering Place, and we will be having a kickoff to go over those plans and invite people, and all of the people on the the board, the council, will be invited on February 19th at 5:00 PM, as well as many people from the community, community leaders, as well as people who have been a part of fundraising and funding different things with the Gathering Place over the years. The architecture company will be there, and other people planning for the work behind the Gathering Place, giving an overview, and also talking about the fundraising process over the next couple of years. Right now, the project is being divided into at least three phases, so the architecture and company will talk about what those three phases will consist of. So I encourage you to pencil that date and time into your calendars. We'd like to have the...
5:00?
5:00, yes. It would be a good representation to have C. be there. Thank you.
Inga, would you put that in the minutes, please? Thank you.
The only thing that I want to say before we resume our team building, which you have been missing for weeks. I don't even know how you guys are functioning without it. January 14th, the Chamber Business After Five is going to be at the Milton YMCA. So I would encourage you all to attend and meet the new manager there, and the new CEO of the Y. So it looks like Howie got a new sweater for Christmas.
Stitch fix?
It's a personal tailor. Just wanted to, nice. So for team building, what was your favorite Christmas gift or favorite holiday activity? We want to know how you have been spending your time when you have not been with us.
I got a bike trainer, so I can ride my bike in my apartment.
So wait, you've been away your treadmill?
I got socks and underwear.
Hugs from my grandkids.
Forty-two hours in a cabin on the Rock River with no children, pets, work phones. Yeah, it was good.
And he already did that? Okay.
I got to play with a 3D pen with my grandkids, which was a lot of fun, learning how to, learning how to use that and make things.
I think we need one of those in the next budget.
We have to accept the library.
Oh, bring them for the next team building activity.
I have all the toys.
I took my daughter to Frozen 2. That was enjoyable.
I got to have friends and read Christmas Carol and had dinner, based off of a lot of food from there. It was fun, and learned that some of the foods from that time period were really good.
I'll go. My daughter and son-in-law got all of us Food Fight gift cards for Food Fight Restaurants and Madison, and then tickets to the Badgers Boys Basketball Game. So New Year's Eve, we all went out to eat, and then we went to watch the basketball game. So that's really fun and very nice gift.
My gift, then I just found out today, is that my son, who has been overseas, is going to be coming home tomorrow.
What a relief.
I guess mine is that my husband came out of his surgery. Well, he had some good, after nine hours, it felt good to get him out of there, and recuperating, a nurse ratchet.
My, I guess my favorite gift was the fact that we bought our, or Santa brought some gifts for both my boys, and they're, it's January 7th, and they're still playing with them. So. I guess, Santa.
You still have Dan, Mark, and Howie. They're always the holdouts.
We booked a trip to go see my cubs across the pond in London next year, or later this year. And a few other stops. The cubs will come back. I'll probably come back. Unless I get stuck in Iceland. The sun won't be setting when I'm there, so.
Favorite activity for Christmas holidays was, had nothing to do with presents, so it was just getting together with my mother, my siblings, and their families on Christmas Day. That was, that was it.
It's about the same, hung around with monsters for five days and did nothing but eat, so. It's about the same, hung around with monsters for five days and did nothing but eat, so.
Nice, yeah. A new sweater, like, we love your sweater, Howie. Audience? But the police were not called. Our special couple in the back. So you're the reason we don't have any snow. We'll get some. We'll take care of it. All right. I think that's everybody. No holdouts? Good job. Happy New Year. Next meeting, January 21st, 2020. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? See you later in January. Thanks for coming, everybody. Have a great night.